The mayor has vetoed a handful of things this year. And he has even said himself that a veto is a tool for coming together. And I think, I think that is true. In moving forward, um, something that, a policy that can come, um, come together, a resolution that can come together. I think there are council members that are definitely trying to not just hold the mayor accountable, but work with him, right? Like at the end of the day, as a city council member in, in this new government structure, you have to be able to work with your mayor to deliver things for community members. And that's the reality of it. That's going to be the reality of if I'm elected in 2023.
We're rolling. We are rolling.
This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing. I've, I've, I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today. We're in the wedge neighborhood right now, 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 right now. Today I was working at City Hall.
Are you still working at City Hall?
Mm-hmm.
You can be a candidate and work at City Hall?
Yes, you can.
Oh.
My position is-
How does Casey Carl feel about that?
I haven't talked to him about it, but what I know is that I'm politically appointed and it's up to, it's up to my council member to decide what my status of employment is. And he's like, if you could separate the two and do a good job of it, go for it. And yeah, I need to pay the bills and I love the job.
It's a political job and you're running for a political job. It's not like you're a public works director or something.
No.
Although that, that's a political appointment too, right?
Yeah, it's like a cabinet member at this point.
Enough with the small talk. We're, we're going to introduce the show officially. Uh, this is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards, and we're doing another Ward 12 candidate. I'm hoping to group these together as a Ward 12 week or day or something. And Areen Chowdhury is running for Ward 12, one of four candidates in Ward 12. Am I right?
Yes.
Welcome, welcome to the podcast.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're good. We're gonna get right into it. First question. I can, I can think of the issue sets, set that I believe in that got me caring about local politics. So without reciting for me, your entire website issue page, tell me, like, what drove you, what are the issues that drove you into this path? Like maybe it's one issue, maybe it's like two or three, but what, what got you here today?
I mean, I think the biggest thing for me is the ways in which like local government and organizing and policymakers can help people afford their lives. So a little bit about my history, um, first gen, parents are from Bangladesh. They immigrated to the United States, settled in Minneapolis, um, outside of Sibley Park. And that came with a tremendous set of struggles, um, from just being able to afford rent, childcare, getting around. They only had one car that they shared behi- between, um, my aunts and uncles and grandparents. And so my entire life, I've just been watching my family figure out how to afford things, build wealth, give me a better life. Um, as, as the oldest kid in my family, I'm like the one that's charted with building generational wealth and supporting myself and often have acted as a navigator for my family. And with, with living in this experience, um, you can feel really, really isolated. You can feel the way that you don't belong in a community group that is wealthier, more war, well off, in a community group that's wider, in a community group that's in different faith from yours. And that can be really isolating. And I think I really experienced that growing up and into college and in the workforce and in Minneapolis, um, working for the city and all different types of spaces. And so that was really a motivating thing for me to get involved in local organizing work and specifically the ways that touch people's lives, um, on the ground level. So pause for the sirens going down Minnehaha Avenue.
Wow. We, we can cut this part out or we could leave it in.
It's good. It's good emergency services.
Are you gonna be okay?
I'm gonna be okay. I'm gonna be great. This is a-
Let me know if you have to evacuate.
Natural occurrence. If that happens, I will let you know and then we'll come back to this, but we'll keep it in. Um, going right into it, I think like housing has always been an issue that has pushed me to show up. Um, both in my organizing work and electing people into public office and then working as a policy aide, right? That's like the most basic thing that we can give people is a safe and affordable place to live in. And for me, um, having my parents be renters, having my parents struggle in homeownership and then now being a renter myself. Um, the things that I've touched is like talking to my own neighbors that experienced living in a, in a property that had a really negligent property manager, like wasn't doing repairs. Um, there is an infestation of mice and then there was just like some livability things that were happening within the apartment. And there was no one there showing up for us. And the only way to like change that was to get organized and try to figure out navigating all these systems and like the city systems and like why aren't inspections happening? And then who owns this place? Um, and having to just like work together as like just everyday people to find a way to get out of a lease in a bad situation in a building that was like, could be really great if it was like taken care of. And I think that's a, that's a story that tells a little bit about why I show up to do this work. Um, and then in my City Hall experience, like when I first worked for the Ward Three Office, um, we were in the, we were at a point where we were talking about inclusionary zoning and how that showed up in the 2040 plan and all these conversations about development and displacement and developer feasibility and renters. And one thing that kept on popping up was the Ward Three Office or the student population. And at the time, there was no policy that was going to say, we're gonna, we're gonna develop up here, but we're going to make sure that there's units that are affordable for students to live their lives, um, that are going to be built and new. Like there was just gonna be no inclusionary zoning. And for me, someone that went to the University of Minnesota, someone that was like talking to students on a day-to-day basis from the Ward Three ca- capacity, I'm like, there are students that are first generation or come from super low income background that are struggling to afford their lives on campus. And I beg to ask the question in those spaces, if we're building out a policy, how are we helping out people in this community that are going to struggle to find a place to live and already are on campus? Like you could like literally divide the university campus and tell where like students based off like a certain ethnicity or income group live in. And I got pushback in City Hall just saying, well, this isn't a, a policy that's meant to solve social issues. And I was just like, then what are we doing here? And I think that's the core of what, a core of why I'm running across issues, right? We need to, at the local level, as like a frontline to help people to show up block by block. Think about the ways that we do our services to make sure that we're touching on the people that need it the most, especially in a time of like recovery and economic disparities. And that's working families. That's renters that are trying to build wealth. That's our immigrant community. Um, and that's, that's a decision that I think we're, we're at a point in making in the city. Um, as it's growing and as we're facing really large challenges around the high housing crisis, the climate crisis and so much more. And I think that goes right directly into community ownership of like, um, places that we rent and then places that small businesses, um, run their operations out of.
Can we take a step back and have you flatter Ward 12 for a moment? Uh, tell, tell us why you live in Ward 12, what you love about Ward 12, uh, so that people who live in Ward 12, your future voters will know that you love, uh, the place that they live.
I mean, there, so Ward 12 is a place that like my family first settled in. They found, um, an apartment just like on Cedar. And the thing that I really remember and my family really remembers having as an amenity and like something that was like really humanizing and connecting to the community is like our local park system. We would regularly go to Minnehaha Falls and there were other parks that were nearby, like Sibley, Sibley Park was right there. And Powderhorn was right there, which is not Ward 12, I know, but it's like our neighbor. But Ward 12 has like spectacular park systems and then also is home to like, um, the highest concentration of public schools. And it's, it's a great place for people to come in and start raising their families and find stability and have community connection. Like I love that. I, if you go up and down Minnehaha Avenue, there are businesses that are social enterprises. There are businesses that are like antique shops. There's childcare. There's coffee shops. There's, um, Mexican food. There's Ethiopian food. And it's like changing and rapidly diversifying, right? We're seeing more renters come into the community and a lot of the people that I'm talking to are like parents of young kids. Um, and that shows me that like this is a place where people want to raise their kids. And I think that goes back to my story of like how my parents decided to be in this community. And for someone that is thinking about her future and what living in Minneapolis and building a life for myself looks like, I resonate with that story. Um, in Ward 12, I really feel like this is a place where I can look into starting a family because I want to have one, one day. It's a place where I can think about moving into homeownership if I wanted to because I'm able to affordably live my life currently, which I'm blessed to do so. And this is a part of our city that remains to be a little bit afforded, more affordable and have all of these amenities. And I want to be able to be a proponent of keeping it that way. Um, I think a good example of like how Ward 12 shows up for each other is this last snowstorm that we had. There were blocks and blocks where cars were buried or curbs were not cut. And you would, you could just go anywhere, like specifically in my neighborhood, if people were helping each other out, they're digging each other's cars out, they were talking to each other, people just know each other here. And I also really like the way that community members in this ward understand that there are a lot of privileges afforded to them and that they're lucky and grateful to live here. And they have, they have a part in being a part of the bigger picture in Minneapolis and showing up for communities and parts of our city on the south side, on the north side that have been historically under invested in, historically redlined. And we have a role and a responsibility in our community to be able to show up for them and push for an equitable Minneapolis. And I, I get that a lot from here. And also people really care about their neighborhood issues and I find that really endearing, right?
Do you?
I do. I think that's why I like, like why I'm in local government for as long as I'm in.
So a, as a, as a council aide, uh, do you go to a lot of neighborhood meetings, like personally?
I actually-
Somebody else's job?
So it's different for each ward is what I have learned in working in two different, very different wards.
Right.
Um, when I worked in the Ward Three Office, I was regularly going to neighborhood association meetings. When it comes to the Ward Nine Office, I go to like one or two here and there, but it's mainly like, mainly us holding community meetings for people to show up to, or there's like associations of people that aren't attached to a neighborhood organization. And I know in Ward 12, there are three strong neighborhood organizations, um, that are thinking about how they're, they've showed up in 2020 and how they're going to show up moving forward. And yeah, that's kind of been the policy aid experience with neighborhood associations.
I don't want to make this too broad, but it is a very broad question. Uh, you, you may have, you have the most experience of any, uh, Ward 12 candidate. Is it, that's gotta be true, right? You have worked at City Hall for many years or at least several years.
I would say I have, I have the most experience and I'd be the one that's ready for the job on day one.
Okay. And so there's a lot of pressure that goes along with that. You have to give us a deep insight into what is going wrong in this city.
Oh, man.
Like, I don't know, you, you have been there. You've watched a lot of things happen and can probably explain it better than your, your challengers or your opponents. Give it, give us a great insight about, about one thing in particular. Doesn't have to, you don't have to take it to like, don't have to make it super broad. Just like one, one thing in particular you have learned and like, I, boy, I really have to fix that.
Um, I'll, I'll also remind you, I'm a first time candidate though, too. I'm most experienced, but this is figuring out this new role as a candidate and being able to communicate, um, out from this capacity. It's been really fun, but I think the thing for being in this role and working on the organizing side and on the inside as a policy aide, the thing that keeps on coming back to me is creating spaces and capacity for community members to really participate in shaping the larger picture, things that are happening in our city. I think a good example of that currently is the Office of Community Safety that is newly minted and passed in ordinance. When I have to spoke to people in Ward 12 about public safety, a question that I've asked them is like, have you heard about this new structure that we're in, the Office of Community Safety? How it's a once in a generation change that the city, city's experience and ha- is poised to completely shift the way that our public safety tools work together and in concert with one another. And it brings forward a real conversation around account accountability and community participation. I don't think right now as a city, we're doing a good enough job to communicate out that like we are in this place of major shift and community needs to be a part of particip- participating in what they want to see investments in. And what are the ways that at the ward level, we're seeing public safety issues happen and occur? Like small businesses are talking to each other about it. Neighborhood associations are talking to each other about it. People that experience crime, they talk to each other about it. I don't need to talk to you about what happens on the next door app. Um, but all of these things aren't connected and the city currently isn't, in my opinion, being a strong enough agent and connecting that and having regular communication about shaping a bigger picture of what, what even is the Office of Community Safety? And what is your role as a neighbor and community, a small business in community and telling us how we can make this new system flow and really show up for you? Um, and I think council members are trying to do that. I, I do know Council Member Andrew Johnson. He's like someone that is known for responding and being on the ground with his constituents. Um, but that's really one thing that I want to be a huge proponent in is more participation in our public policy shaping and kind of pulling back the, pulling back the curtain, being like, here's where we are and this is a space where me as a council member and my two policy aides are not going to be able to figure this out alone and shouldn't be the ones to. And I think that goes to other issues, but I think Office of Community Safety is a, a great way to narrate it.
So here's a related question and we've had a debate about who, who's in charge in, in 2021, the government structure debate. So I'm thinking, what can you do as a council member to keep people safe? Uh, we know the mayor is the boss of MPD. So what, what can you do if you win, uh, when people ask you, I, I don't feel safe and, uh, I want you to change it at City Hall?
I think that's one of, gonna be one of our biggest questions in 2023 when we're just specifically voting on the council. I think you, you asked in your kickoff episode, what's the theme of this year? And we're still trying, I think we're still trying to figure it out, but I think it's, for me, and I think it'll be a theme for a while, is crossroads, right? We're in a place where council members and the mayor are at a crossroads on public safety. Do we continue to do what we've done in the past where people felt that public safety have been dis- disjointed, stretched thin, not the most transparent, not accountable? Or do we shift into something that's more transformative? Cause, uh, cause Minneapolis is different from what it was before, um, the pandemic, before George Floyd was murdered, right? Where our community is in a different spot. And I think as a council member, one of the biggest roles that we play when it comes to public safety, sure, we're not in charge of the Minneapolis Police Department, but we have a role in talking to law enforcement about what they're doing and really paying attention to it. And then using that to inform how we're going to invest in and support other alternatives to policing and the things that are a part of an ecosystem of public safety. As a council member, for me, I think this is a new conversation in Minneapolis that we're having about public safety. Um, and looking at it more as an e- ecosystem that needs other, other tools to succeed and show up for people versus just like finding a silver bullet solution to reduce crime. And I think public safety on each block, like if you, if you're, if you experience auto theft, if you experience, um, like for me, like my car was recently damaged by someone. I haven't figured out who it was, but like, there's like a level of violation that happens and it might not be the end of the world in the larger scheme of things, but like you need someone to show up and hear you and be there. And like, we have different tools in, in the city that could be used even better. We have a commu- we have community, um, safety specialists, people that are tasked with like talking to block captains, keeping them in loop. And like, how do we go even more beyond that? How do we create legislative directives that create, um, a framework around the way that we're supposed to include community in public safety and in the way that we talk to community members about what's happening? Like it's not a one conversation or a one moment thing when it comes to public safety. It's a, we have to keep on having these channels of dialogue with people. And when they feel like their safety has been violated or just isn't as strong before, that's a real invalid concern. And maybe it's as simple as like picking up the phone and talking to someone and then being like, hey, I've noted this down or it's deeper and we need to think creatively about putting together, I don't know, a community safety ambassador program. I know I mentioned that on my website, but that's been a real time thing that I've gotten to work on in the Ward Nine Office with the Community Safety Specialist Program. Like having added capacity to be, to have people that are violence interrupters and trained in de-escalation. That matters to people when they're seeing, um, when they're seeing livability issues on a corridor or they feel like there is an intervention step before having an armed police officer show up.
Is the police staffing debate done? Because I, I thought in 2021, it didn't matter who was elected. It feels like the trajectory when it comes to police staffing is just set. You can see Fletcher or Michael Rainville, the, the line on the chart is going down. It will continue to go down. And it's not related to, to how much money you put in, into MPD. Uh, and the, doesn't seem like we're having debates about police staffing number, uh, numbers with the current city council. So like, is that even a topic that, that we will be talking about this year or is that pretty much set?
I think police staffing is always going to be a topic of conversation in this city. That's just a reality.
Isn't it relevant though?
That, I was just gonna say, I don't think that's like the main thing that we're talking about, right? Like at the end of the day, what I have to point to right now is that where we, we were, there was a Supreme Court ruling that we had to work towards staffing and funding a certain set of police officers. I think it's 731 police officers. And that's what we're charged to do and that's by law. For me, I think the bigger conversation right now, when it comes to public safety is how are we wisely spending our dollars and our times and things that are going to show up for community that are part of that ecosystem that I keep on going back to. As a council member, that is what I am squarely like when it comes to public safety and what I can like build out and like control and write policy on and bring community in on. It's that, it's the, it's violence prevention. It's support with law enforcement or support outside of it. Um, I haven't heard a lot about police staffing this time around. But again, I think there's, yeah, it's just a bigger conversation of like, what is this new generation of public safety that we're going into? How do we have it be something that we trust? And I think with government structure, that kind of cuts the role even clearer, right? It is the responsibility of the mayor, even more so than before to staff the police. And it is the responsibility of the council to create legislation, to have oversight and think about accountability, to make sure we never have public safety responders, not just police committing injustices to people based off of what they look like or how much money they make or what a kind of situation they are in, right? And that's what I'm really interested in talking to people about. Um, I'm not interested in a public safety conversation that puts people in two different camps. I don't think that's good for people. I don't think that's how po- public safety really is. I think it's multifaceted and dynamic and I don't want to be in a place where neighbors feel like they can't trust each other because of their position and belief in public safety. And I'm, I'm not going to be a proponent of that division. I want to be able to deliver services to people and response to people and connect their community.
So when we think of our dysfunctional, uh, racist, corrupt MPD, like are we, are we on the right path towards changing that? Are we on the wrong path?
I'm hopeful. I think it's a work in progress and I think being a responsible city leader in this moment is being able to call out the problems that we've had in the past and in the recent past. There's no way of like going around it. Our, our Minneapolis Police Department was run by a president that was blatantly racist, blatantly tr- supported Trump. And that was what Minneapolis was known for. And we had, um, the police murder of George Floyd. And accountability matters to residents. The culture within the police department changing matters to residents and it matters to law enforcement, law enforcement of color, law enforcement in our communities, it matters to them. And I think that's why we have to have really strong conversations about the ways that the city council can do poli- police accountability. Um, and then also invest in, invest in helping people afford their lives and the things that they knew, need to do so they're not in a point of desperation or place where they're just like isolated or outside of the community. I think that's like at the core of our public safety.
What power does the city, I hate to belabor this point. What power does the, does the city council have on police accountability? I was talking to Mitra. I don't know if you had the chance to, to watch that one or see the clip. And she was astonished. She's like, what are you people doing in Minneapolis? Because they can set police policy in ordinance in, in St. Paul. They have a strong mayor system. And so it's not like inherent in the strong mayor system that your city council is just irrelevant to the police policy thing. But it appears that's what we have in Minneapolis. And I'm wondering, uh, do you think the city council, what is the city council's role to play in regards to police accountability?
Big question, huge question. I mean, to name one example is this new structure of civilian oversight that we're moving into. Um, I think it's a, I think it's important that we have a strong civilian oversight. Um, that is talking to review panels and right now, like what we had with the, um, the PCOC, now it's CCPO, lots of acronyms. From my understanding, um, they weren't, they weren't in communication with review panels that were looking at like discipline and those review panels. With review panels that were looking at like discipline and those review panels were giving, um. Recommendations to the police chief and the mayor. Now we're moving into a structure where that is more communicative and people in community get to like be a part of. Looking at the different cases and complaints that come and being a part of delivering those decisions. And I think that's a step in the right direction. I think we need to continue to work towards. Um, being able to have more, more in- input in community. Around police oversight and accountability and the decisions that we make because at the end of the day, right now, it still goes back to the. Police chief and the mayor and how do we, how do we continue to build out like a, a third party independent body? That can show up and be there. I think that's a real thing that we have to have a dialogue on, um, as a city and as a ward. Of like what does police accountability look like and what do you want to do? Um. I think there's con- there's conversations that we can have about the police contract. Um. There's two ways to look at the police contract. It's like from a wo- workforce perspective, thinking about like providing benefits and. Um, things that make the job attractive, right? There, there's a lot of conversation on that, but then there's like. Laying out a contract that has accountability mechanisms built within it or taking out things that. Um, make accountability harder, right? So a few things that I am interested in digging into is. Um, the cooling off period that exists for police officers after a critical incidents or your. Incidents of excessive force that can go for twenty-four to forty-eight hours before they have to, uh, share their story. I think that, that is a period of time that can really blur, um, getting. Getting a factual statement that's really accountable and true and we should look into that currently. Um, when discipline happens, police officers often move into something called coaching. And that's not really transparent. And often, and we don't, and we don't know if it like leads to true discipline and I wanna look into what maybe removing something like that looks like. And having conversations with the Labor Relations Director. This is really getting into the weeds, right? This is how you know I've been in it, in it as a policy aide, but like bigger picture, I think. Though, the, the spots of oversight are like those two sections and then going back to like, how do we? How do we have other response systems that show up? That's just, that is able to. Support law enforcement and make sure that like they're, they're not getting burned out and in a situation where. They're so traumatized that they're causing an act of police violence and also. Really holding the administration accountable with constituents on. What is the police policy that you're gonna put forward to change culture if you're saying that like, that's what we're doing as a city in this next step? Even if I don't get to legislate on it, I have a voice as a council member that is. That is able to bring the voice of community members in on asking, what does that look like? And these, this is what my community is saying that they wanna see shift in the culture of MPD and its policy. How are you gonna do that? And how are you gonna come here to Ward Twelve and talk to people about that? Their safety concerns, yes, and reducing crime, yes, but also police accountability.
I can feel you giving, trying to give me as much detail as possible. So, I, I wanna absolve you of the responsibility to, uh, treat all of my questions as if they're good and deserve, uh. Extensive answers.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll note that from now on and I'll tell you too.
Uh, sometimes I throw out garbage questions that you can just, uh, give, uh, you know, you can half ask the response if you want to. So. Do, and you can make this a quick one if you want, uh, a quick answer. Do you think the current city council has been using their power? To hold the mayor accountable under the new government structure? Are they standing up to the mayor? Is that working out?
I'll just answer, I'll just answer this, eh, this way. We, there, the. The mayor has vetoed a handful of things this year and he has even said himself that a veto is a tool for coming together and I think. I think that is true. And moving forward, um, something that, a policy that can come, um, come together, a resolution that can come together. I think there are council members that are definitely trying to not just hold the mayor accountable, but work with him, right? Like at the end of the day. As a city council member and in this new government structure, you have to be able to work with your mayor to deliver. Things for community members and that's the reality of it. That's gonna be the reality of. If I'm elected in twenty twenty-three and I wanna be able to do that well and I wanna be able to. I, I wanna be able to think strategically and like maybe encourage, um, fellow council members if I'm elected to join me in that. I think there is something to say about this council being able to work together better. Um. And I think that's, that's the way in a strong mayor system, you're able to actually come together in a group decision and move things forward that isn't. Just coming from the executive branch. I think in Saint Paul, that's like something that they do a rather good job of is having a relational type of. Um, positioning with their mayor that helps them get a lot of things done.
So one of the downsides of having lots of information on your website is that I get to read it and ask questions about it. So here it comes.
Okay. Let's do it.
Change land use policy and this is from your website. One of your housing items, change land use policy to create wider availability of accessory dwelling units. And, uh, the obvious question is, how? Wha- what do we do?
Um, I think it's just a matter of. One, there's council members that have energy to do that, to make, uh, make it possible to make accessory, accessory dwelling units. That more people can be a part of and look differently. I think it's a matter of writing ordinance and getting the votes to do it, simply put, spec- and bringing in stakeholders like the senior community. Um, and people that are pro- proponents of affordable housing. That's kind of what that's getting at.
Okay. Have you been following the commercial, uh, zoning, uh, implementation with the twenty forty plan? Uh, it's the land use rezoning study.
Not closely, no.
Not closely. So maybe I can summarize it briefly. So we have figured out basically the size and form of buildings when it comes to the twenty forty plan. And now we're getting into like the land use portion, so. Not what the size of the building is, but like what can you do inside the building? Can you open up a shop there? Is it industrial? Is it housing only? That kinda stuff? So land use as opposed to like the form of the buildings. And so one of the ques- the big questions in the group, uh, Neighbors for More Neighbors is, uh, uh, advocating around this. Is the idea of expanding commercial zoning to more places. So that, you know, you talked about Ward Twelve being a place where you can go to shops and restaurants and you've got daycare and you've got all these places. Near to you that makes it a great place to live. I wonder how you feel about expanding, uh. The ability to open up little shops, uh, and commercial zoning in more places.
I think that's a really good way to help. Connect community again, expand our tax base and then I, I'd be interested to see how that plays out. In changing. Land use and the built form around places where we'd put more commercial zoning and how that would like impact community. I think for me, the thing that I keep at the core of zoning and development is how are we doing it in a way that's. Gonna guarantee us affordable housing and places where people that. Are lower income, are working, are newer to our community as immigrants or new Americans are able to access. Access these things that we're building and it's not just for the wealthiest in our city. So those are kind of the considerations that I would have, but I think. If we're able to keep. New commercial zoning areas, places where people can affordably become small business owners and have their shops and we don't. Continue, don't corporate, corporatize, can't talk. Um. I think that could be really positive and that's a part of us looking into a city that's growing.
Are you ready for a thorny housing issue?
I mean, I'll be as ready as I can be. Give it to me. Let's, let's talk about the thorny housing issue, John.
So, so can I compliment your website? At least you, you say things about transportation on your website. That's a good thing.
Thank you.
Eh, and so I told you, one of the downsides of putting stuff on your website is now people can ask you questions about it. The, the other candidate I talked to didn't have much, uh, to go on, so. Uh, but here's my question. It feels maybe intentional that you left, uh, any mention of rent control off the website? Am I right? That there's no mention there? And so maybe I'm wondering, are you still formulating a position there?
Um, so you're not the first one to ask me this.
Cause I would expect, I, so I know you a little bit and I would expect you to definitely have a position on your website. It's not. I don't think of you as somebody who would hide from this issue. And so it feel, it feels like maybe, uh, you're deliberating on exactly what you're going to say on the topic.
Um, that, so I just put out my expanded vision, maybe this like last week. And rent stabilization is a topic that. I'm hearing from a lot of people all at once right now, right? Like there's people in community that is literally coming into City Hall and like advocating for a policy. The work group put forth its recommendations. Council is like. Still in a place where they haven't discussed what they're going to create as a policy and I'm on the phones talking to Ward Twelve constituents. About affordable housing. So my overall position on rent stabilization and I'm unapologetic about it. Is that we need to have a rent stabilization policy. I'm not interested in building a city where we're pricing people out of their homes. Um, and we're seeing rents go up at a rate that makes it. Difficult for someone to stay in the community that they've lived in. Um, there was someone that I talked to that. Had to move out of the place that they've like built relationships with people because their rent went up like ten percent in one year. And they were not expecting it and they weren't prepared for it and there was a move out day with a bunch of people that had the same experience. And that's heartbreaking and I don't want to do that and. That's where I'm at and I also want to be a candidate that is able to hold conversations and dialogue with people. In my community about what they wanna see specifically and not just push forward my own opinion. Um, that's really, really important to me and it's really important that like I keep that chain of communication in and so if people are watching. And they wanna talk to me about rent stabilization, rent control, and they have strong opinions about what the policy should be. I wanna have a conversation about you. I wanna hear about why you think a certain percentage, um. Is important, no exemptions, if that's in the conversation, vacancy, de-control, all these things. Hit me up, let's talk about it. I wanna hear from you and I especially wanna hear from you if you're a Ward Twelve resident.
Okay, here's another thorny one. So where, where is the city's response to homeless encampments going wrong? What have you observed, uh, in your role at City Hall? What can you do as a council member? How should it be done differently?
That's a big one. These are all really big ones and I think, I think that's the theme, John, for twenty twenty-three. It's like crossroads. Like here, here are the choices. Do we keep on neglecting to go to a place where we can actually have? Um. A start to a process that's actually gonna reduce homelessness or are we going to continue to evict encampments? Um, and then. Put people that are already in really tough conditions and even tougher ones cuz they lose their belongings, they lose connection to service providers. They lose connection, um, to people that they build community with in encampments or like in neighborhoods. Or they lose like access to like valuable resources that they've had. Like that's been something that I've heard from unhoused residents and I lost my cell phone. I lost my social security card. I lost this one thing that I had that was like my tool to get around and be. Um, be able to at least have some sort of stability, something that I could forge for myself. Like, do we, do we do that or do we do this other thing? And I think right now. Where the city is really struggling is having a humane and dignified response. Uh, my personal experience with encampments apart from working. In the Ward Nine Office and talking to community members that have literally had encampments in between their houses. Um, and then experiencing their own safety issues out of that and livability issues and not. But also caring for their unhoused residents and not wanting to see them. In a situation where they're one, like being preyed upon by people that take advantage of vulnerable communities to, um. Face it, facing like a violent and traumatic experience. I think. The city isn't fully like in touch with the type of things that we need to do as our role as a city. Um, to get to a place where we're reducing homelessness and I think. One thing that I have really been pushing for and I wanna see realized is like an Avivo Village. Part two, like that's a model that's been really successful in moving people that are unhoused to. A stable living situation where they have autonomy. Um, I think the city needs to be a, a louder voice and advocating for the fact that like. Shelter response, one, it's not, it, there's not enough of it and then also it doesn't fit. The needs of a lot of unhoused residents and we need to think creatively. And one thing that I haven't seen and I wanna be a proponent of is. Really creating a table between city, county, state, MINDOT about how we are collectively working together. To not just address an encampment, but address homelessness. And every year when we go up, up against a clock of winter, what we are doing to get people in a safe, safe and stable situation. Before it gets really, really cold. Currently, there's a lot of tables that are really like staff oriented. Or have some elected officials, but the full breadth of connection and transparency is not there and I also wanna help the. Get the city away from this mentality that like, um. That like noticing or doing these things around harm reduction to make sure that people are able to like. Get the services that they need and, um, be okay is. Sorry, I like lost my train of thought there.
It's okay, it's okay.
Big topic. It's a big topic.
Uh, so I have so much sympathy for my guests because I am constantly losing my train of thought and I'm only asking like thirty second questions.
I know.
Also, also we're like forty-eight minutes into this and, uh, I apologize for putting you through this.
Can we, can you ask some fun questions? Is that a ask that I can make?
I feel like I don't have any fun questions. This is why I hate, I hate talking to candidates because I feel like I, uh. I don't know, I load up on the serious questions. How do you get around? How do you get around the city? Are you riding a bike? Are you riding a bus? Are you in a car? Uh, there's a quick potentially fun question. What's your transportation experience?
Um, so I was biking this summer until I like totally wrecked my bike and that was shitty.
Oh, how, how did that happen?
Um, I ran into a car.
Oh, were you, were you at fault?
I don't think so.
Okay, so the car got in your way is another way of saying that.
Exactly. And so it was already not the best bike to begin with and like, um. So I lost it to that, but I'm hoping to get back on the bike this year. Um, and then. I take my car, I have a car, I drive it usually to, uh. See my parents and outside of the city and then I take the light rail. I'm like right by a light rail station and that's like the fastest and easiest way. To get to and from work.
Are we underselling your bike accident? Were you, are you okay?
Okay. I was, I was like more startled than anything and the person was more startled than anything. It wasn't like a high speed car moving. It was more like, they like came out and like were stopping and then I was like coming and it was like.
How long have you been biking?
I first learned how to ride a bike when I was eight years old, which is actually kinda late into the game. Actually nine years old.
Yeah, I've been, I biked all my life. I moved to, biking for transportation was new to me when I moved to Minneapolis. It's like. Okay, you bike as a kid, you bike to school, but, uh, like biking on city streets was a new experience for me moving to Minneapolis.
Seriously get into biking on city streets until like the pandemic hit, actually. I was like always really scared. I'm not gonna lie. I've heard, like, I've had friends get into. I was like always really scared. I'm not gonna lie. I've heard like, I've had friends get into bike accidents. I've heard stories of people that just like carry their U-lock in their hand and then their one like way of like defending themselves is hitting a car with it. And I was like, I'm really scared. I'm like, I don't feel coordinated or just like emotionally stable being on a bike on a city road. Um, but when the pandemic hit and everything was kind of like closed off, that was like the best way to see the world.
Yeah, eh, and no shame about being scared. It's scary out there, scarier than ever uh on the, on the streets. Uh, from a transportation perspective. Uh, so have you learned anything about what this city need? I asked the other Ward twelve candidate, have we overdone it on bike lanes? Be, I just, that came up. And so I'm gonna ask you, have we gone too far on the bike lanes?
Are we gonna villainize bike lanes? Is that what we're gonna do?
So I, I'm asking in a sarcastic way. It's difficult to tell with me uh what my uh emotional.
I know you're not villainizing bike lanes. I think like there's like something to say about that like happening in our city. I think we aren't doing enough to just like connect walk and bike and transit. And that's obviously on my website, but I'm gonna keep on saying it because we can invest in that and we can invest in making sure that bike lanes are plowed well. Um, and have that consideration. I think Minneapolis has long taken pride in being one of the most bikeable cities in the country. And that's a values add to us. And for the people that are like, how are we gonna, how are we gonna bring more money in to our city? Um, that's one of our biggest ways is to attract more people to come in here and like spend time here and bike around in our cities and spend their money here. And so having a bikeable city is one hundred percent a part of that.
So you've got a climate section on your website. Hit me with one huge climate opportunity that you see and that you will uh, you will push for if you're elected. What's, what's the opportunity we have? What's one big climate opportunity?
I think our climate opportunity, and I'm gonna go into transit because that is like, that is like one of the biggest ways that we can take everyday residents and like the, the way that we develop our community into becoming one that uses less emissions and moves away from just like mainly using cars uh, to get around is looking into piloting a fare free transit program and how we can help more people get on public transit from the municipal level. I think like that's something that is being explored at the state level. The county talks about it and the city can one hundred percent be a part of it. And I think that's a, that's a way, one, not only to like get people onto transit, but it's also a way to like promote transit and make it an exciting and happy thing to be a part of. Um, I'm also interested in thinking about how during the pandemic, we closed off cars from being in certain green spaces, like greenways, like creating new greenways essentially. Um, and being able to do something like that in Ward twelve would be really cool. Maybe not permanently, but like celebrating it as like we're doing this as a week to promote people like tangibly feeling a part of um, addressing the climate crisis. So those are a couple of things.
I would appreciate more uh, street festivals or just clo- closing streets, maybe on the weekends.
Yeah. Do you know what First Fridays are?
First Fridays? No, what are First Fridays?
Some, some cities have them. I went to Oakland and we happened to be in Oakland during one of their fir- First Fridays. And it's like similar to open streets, but like the core isn't open streets. It's like they literally like close off a section of the, the city and like maybe they like make sure it's also like connected to a park system. And they have like a festival that's like around music and art and like community vendors coming through and there's like a lineup and people can just like be in community together every first Friday of the month across the city.
Here's a gotcha question.
Okay.
What is your favorite uh, open streets event?
My favorite? Oh my gosh, you're gonna make me choose?
Yeah, it should be easy for you.
Uh, you're, I mean, the answer is Minnehaha, right? No, and Lake Street because we have Lake Street too.
What about Lindale? Lindale is my favorite. Minnehaha is my second favorite. And I think I have, my answer is the right answer. You have to answer it the way you did because.
It's Minnehaha Avenue for sure. And then Lake Street, I think, doesn't get enough credit.
In what way? In what? Enough credit for what?
As being one of the really fun open streets. So I think in twenty twenty, that was the open streets that got nixed. And I was really upset about that because obviously Ward twelve, we have the Minnehaha corridor, but we also now with redistricting um, have the Cooper neighborhood, which has a section of Lake Street.
So did, did you bring a list of recommendations? I should have told you uh beforehand. Something that makes you happy. It could be an experience or maybe it's a, a book or music or a particular place you like to walk. Uh, something you can recommend to others that will make them as happy as that, that thing makes you. And it could be more than one thing if you want to. Could be a hobby. Something you enjoy that you think others should try because it will make them happy.
So I think people should participate, especially now that we're not in like uh, the isolation period of the pandemic. And people watching more often as a way of like appreciating and connecting to community. And like there are just like really good parts of the city to be able to do that. Minnehaha Falls is an excellent place to people watch. I literally one day saw like someone do bridal photos. And also do like a photo shoot where they had um carved jack-o'-lanterns and they put them on their head. And they were just like taking spooky photos around Minnehaha Falls. And it brought me a lot of joy. And then you can like see all the people that are like trying to wrangle their kids. Um, or are like on first dates at sea salts, maybe second dates. I think that's really cool. I think it's really humanizing and endearing to do that. You can also do that at coffee shops. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give some credit to the, the the wedge area of the city. Well, actually it's not the wedge area of the city. Please forgive me. Um.
Did you, did you uh, have an uptown geography debate? Where is it?
The uptown, wh- what it, what it came down to is uptown is a state of mind. And I think that's like, I think that is like the blanket statement. And I think that works for everyone. You can have your rigid boundaries or you can have uptown be whatever it needs to be. Uh, but a good fit place to people watch is like on that section, on that corner of where the Wedge Co-op is hums. And then the Speedway, just.
Twenty, twenty second in Lindale.
Twenty second in Lindale, so.
That's the wedge area. That's the wedge area.
Okay, I got nervous.
Yeah, you did fine.
Speaking to Wedge Live.
That's the, uh, one of the more interesting recommendations I've heard is go to public places and observe uh, other people.
Yeah, cause then you realize people aren't that different from you. Even if they have like super different opinions on you on like local issues, especially if you're someone that pays attention to politics, go out into the world and go people watching. People are funny, people are cute, people care about each other, people are just trying to get through their lives.
And not everyone is on Nextdoor complaining about the lack of crime posts.
We have wonderful community and everyone's just trying to figure themselves out and how they can show up for one another and be okay.
How, how do you feel at the end of this? Do you feel okay? I wor- I worry that I have uh convinced you, you made a bad choice. Exhausting talking to me for an hour.
I mean.
It's good practice, though. You're gonna show up for those candidate forums and you're gonna have two minutes. You're gonna have two minute time limits and you'd be like, thank God, it's not the Wedge Live podcast where he lets me talk for extended periods.
I mean, I feel, I feel good after this. Um, this has definitely been like I think I messaged you about this. Like I've watched your content for a really long time. So I was just like, what is it gonna be to be like the person that's on it? And uh, I have to say, it's just been very, very chill being able to have a conversation with you about the stuff that I care about and why I'm running. Um, I am fully aware that this is a really difficult job that I'm running for, running towards. And it requires a lot of, a lot of attention to detail. Um, a lot of time spent and a lot of stamina. And I think one thing I wanna let people know is that it, being a woman of color and a young person, um, you hear that it takes like someone asking you or multiple people asking you nine or seven times to run for office before you feel qualified to, before you feel like you could put your like life in in a whole different chapter. And that's one hundred percent been true for me, even as a person that's like spent the last eight years organizing to help people get elected or organizing on issues or being a policy aide. Like the reason why I'm running is because so many of my friends and community members in twelve asked me to. And they wanna have someone that has a clear vision and is going to take the values that we're talking about in twenty twenty-three and move them to action. Um, and it's cool to be on the show to communicate that and share that about myself. I think when you run for office, there's a lot of assumptions that get made of you. Um, and you have to be able to take it in stride. And so the opportunities to kind of share like where I'm coming from and how I'm showing up in this space, I'm grateful for.
Maureen Chowdhury is running for city council in Ward twelve here in Minneapolis. Uh, this is the, been the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Thank you for listening.